Called to order the Board of County Commissioners' work session for April 21st, 2015. Welcome, everybody. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance and the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A salute to the flag of the state of New Mexico, the zealous symbol of perfect friendship among the united cultures.
Does any changes need to come on the agenda today? Okay. Can I get an approval of the?
Second.
All those favors, six, five, say aye. Aye. Motion passes. The general purpose of a county work session is to inform the Grant County Board of Commissioners of the agenda items that will be addressed at the next regular meeting and for the department heads and other elected officials to communicate with commissioners in regard to matters of their respective departments. In accordance with Grant County Resolution Number 1501, we welcome the public to attend county work sessions, however, there will be no public input permitted to this meeting. We'll move on by reviewing the April 23rd, 2015, regular meeting agenda, and I'll turn it over to you, Sharling.
Mr. Chairman, members. We'll move down to Item B, Public Hearing. We will have another public hearing to discuss the proposed ordinance increasing the size of the Board of Commissioners to five members. And Mr. Sharp from Research and Polling will be here again, so you can discuss any proposed changes or questions that you might have. He's scheduled to be here for that.
Okay.
Next item, approve, disapprove, regular meeting minutes.
We're going to the Expenditure Report. Linda, do you want to go over that?
Good morning, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. The Expenditure Report we have in front of you is, for a total of $1,555,856.24. And this covers AP checks from check number 174271 through 174562. The total of AP checks is $1,137,967.77. Included into that total is a check to ASAT Aviation in the amount of $19,042.68 for March jet fuel. A check to Engineers Incorporated for engineering services to the North Hurry Road in the amount of $9,822.6. A check to Summit Food Services for $18,044.44. This is for February inmate meals. A check to Architectural Workshop in the amount of $21,274.09. And this is for architectural services for the remodel of the Grant County Memorial Veterans Business and Conference Center. A check to Bank of America in the amount of $14,364.72. This is for a lease payment for a pumper at the Tyrone Fire Department. And there's a check in the amount of $25,231.22 to Wright Express Fleet Services, and this is for the March fuel. Also included in this Expenditure Report is payroll checks for pay periods seven and eight, in the total of $412,888.47.
Any questions on the Expenditure Report? Okay. We move right into the cash flow analysis.
This cash flow analysis is for the period ending January 31st, 2015. The actual cash balance in the general fund at July 1st, 2014 is $2,379,621. The revenues through January 31st were $5,762,242. The transfers through January 31st were $1,268,910. A negative $1,268,910. Operating expenditures to date were $1,980,700. And salaries to date through January 31st, $3,424,283. Leaving an actual cash balance at the end of January of $1,467,971. The projected transfers in through June 30th, 2015 are $432,960 in. $1,370,301 transfers out. Projected revenues of $5,577,303. Projected operating expenditures of $814,182. And projected salaries and benefits of $2,880,015. With a projected cash balance at the end of June of $2,413,735. Leaving us a surplus of $51,682. In the road fund, the actual cash balance at July 1st, 2014 was $120,460. Revenues through January 31st were $374,253. Transfers to date were $333,216 in. Operating expenditures of $148,593.43. Salaries and benefits to date of $739,719. Leaving us an actual cash balance at the end of January of $60,384. A negative. Projected transfers in through June 30th are $506,230. Projected revenues of $501,467. Projected operating expenditures of $205,417. Projected salaries and benefits of $558,480. Leaving us with a projected cash balance at the end of June 30th of $183,425. With a surplus of $45,741. In the correction fund, the actual cash balance on July 1st, 2014 was $26,163. Revenues through January 31st are $549,921. Transfers through January 31st are $835,132. Operating expenditures of $343,122. Salaries and benefits of $1,145,294. Leaving us with an actual cash balance of a negative $77,200. The projected transfers in are $835,132. Predicted operating expenditures, I'm sorry, predicted revenues are $417,200. Projected operating expenditures are $305,738. Projected salaries and benefits of $861,773. With a projected cash balance of $7,422. And the actual negative cash balance in the road and the correction fund at the end of January is due to the second half of transfers that I need to do in May when we get the second half of property taxes.
Thank you, Linda. Any questions on that? Okay. Let me move with new business. Go ahead.
Item D, Senator Morales will be here to give a legislative report. Item E, George will be here to give his quarterly report on the Tourism Visitor Center and Marketing for the Arts and Cultural District. Item F, recognition of Alex Brown for donating rights to Potomac Park. I believe this was Commissioner Ramos's agenda item.
Should we change that to the recognition of Alex Brown and the town of Silver City? Yeah. What was that?
Okay. Item G, Matt Schultz will be here to discuss the Hila National Forest Revision Plan, Plan Revisions. Item H, approve, disapprove, proclamation declaring April 19th to April 25th, 2015 as Marine Corps League Week. Item I, approve, disapprove, proclamation declaring May 5th, 2015 as Give Grandly, Give Local Day.
When is it going to be dated? Yes. What is that?
Should we change the date on that, being that that's passed already?
Is that right?
Don't even. When they changed this proclamation into you, were those dates correct and they wanted to be on this?
They wanted to be on this.
But it's going to be dated for?
Dedication in the past, I guess. We'll just make sure on that, because that's not, that's not integral to the, to the agenda. So if that dates aren't, make sure those dates are right. Because if they got it to us late, then we'll make it whatever date they want it to be.
Item J is approve, disapprove, fire protection fund for the 2016 fiscal year for all nine volunteer fire departments, also including Randy's FMO application. Those are included. These are annual applications that are submitted for state fire protection funds. Item K, appoint members to the Shooting Range Advisory Board. There are seven available positions, and those will be, there are 11, I believe 11 candidates. Ten. Item L, approve, disapprove, transfer title of a 2007 utility trailer from, that's not correct. It's to transfer a utility trailer to the Pino Salcos Volunteer Fire Rescue Department from an individual. Isn't that right, Randy?
Yes.
So we'll need to?
You're going from Mr. Erickson?
Yes. Donating it to the Pino Salcos Fire Department. We'll change that to be correctly. Item M, approve, disapprove, transfer of Unit 2809, this ambulance from Sacio Fire Department back to Hila Regional EMS Service. Item N is approve, disapprove, inventory deletion from the lower members' volunteer fire department. They have quite a lengthy list of items they wish to dispose of. Moving on to contacts and agreements. Item O.
Let me ask a question on one from the lower members. I'm assuming Randy's gone through this and made sure that no other departments can use this when we transfer it around. And some of this looks like trash.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Yeah, it's been a list of inventory they've had for a while, but I would not let them dispose of it till, obviously, it came through you. I met with Earl. Some of the stuff is at the road department, but just in their, kind of their trash pile, I would say. So yes, it's been looked at, and.
Contacts and agreements. Item O, approve, disapprove, agreement amendment number one between North Central New Mexico Economic Development District Non-Metro Area Agency on Aging in Grant County. This is an amendment to their parents' agreement decreasing the funding by $34,388. No questions so far? Bids. Item P, so be approved, disapproved bid number 14-6, brush truck body for Whiskey Creek Fire Department. There was one bid received from Pete's Equipment and Repair in Albuquerque for a total of They met all of the, all of these specifications with the exception of one, which was a seatbelt sensor which was not available for the particular taxi that the body's going on. But it's not required by the NFPR code, so that's not the issue. So we would recommend approval of that. Moving on to resolutions. Item Q, approve, disapprove, resolution R15-11, resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Grant County, New Mexico, adopting and approving continuing disclosure compliance procedures for bonds and loans of the county, other matters relating thereto, and ratifying actions previously taken in connection therewith. What this resolution does is designates the county manager as compliance officer for purposes of continuing disclosure procedures for all of our bonds. It just puts it in a formal resolution stating what we'll do and basically just staying in compliance with the law. Item R, approve, disapprove, resolution R15-12, resolution adopting and approving post issuance tax compliance procedures for tax exempt bonds and loans of the county, other matters relating thereto, and ratifying actions previously taken in connection therewith. This is very similar to the previous resolution. This is also designating the county manager as compliance officer for the purpose of compliance with all tax related matters with all of our outstanding bond issues. No questions so far? No? All right. Item S, approve, disapprove, health plan claims for the period ending March 31st, 2015. It's a total of 55 claims in the amount of $40,213.54. And then we will hold an executive session to discuss county manager's short term and long term goals. That's it.
Any questions on the agenda, changes, additions?
I have none.
None? Okay. We'll move into county reports, and we'll start with Mr. Cunningham.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. A few updates for you all. We'll start with finances, as usual, and just remind everyone we're, this is always a month and a half behind. So these are the February finances, the Old Regional's end of month from February. I need to let the Commissioners know in our community that month of February, we had a financial correction, and it ended in Hila Regional posting a $1.5 million loss for that month. Now, I want to be clear, it's a correction in how we calculate kind of the complex revenue cycle issues in healthcare. Healthcare is not like a normal business where you charge a dollar and you receive a dollar back. We charge a dollar, and depending on the insurance company, we may get 20 cents back or 25 cents back. There's delays in payments from insurance companies, so it's a constant, month in, month out estimation of the percentage that we will actually collect on all, for all the services we bill. And so from time to time, as we analyze this, there will be a correction. And it's better to do it in the middle of the year than the end of the year. So we ended with a $1.5 million correction. It wasn't that we spent more money or made less money. This is truly, for the most part, a correction in our financials. That put us year to date, we have been in the black, that put us year to date as end of February at a negative $4,437,000. So we knew from the beginning of the year that this was going to be a tight year. We weren't even sure if we would break even this year, because this is a building year for us. We were putting a lot of revenue into our IT overhaul, and a lot of funding into our growing physician practices. So this was a rebuilding year for us. So this is, you know, overall, not a big surprise, but this correction has brought about, obviously, concern and urgency on our part and the part of the Board. Some of the good news is we're still at 134 days in cash, so we still have good days of cash. We have zero debt. So that gives us a little room and a little bit of time to make this correction. We have a really comprehensive plan to address this issue. We've already shared that with our Board, and we've already implemented multiple components of that plan. I just want to remind, we've talked about this over the last two years, this is the most complex healthcare environment in modern history. So when these types of things come up, I'm not, you know, completely surprised. This is such a challenge, what we're dealing with. But I want you to know that we personally are very confident in our ability to move through this latest challenge very quickly. We did the $10 million turnaround in about 11 months. And that positions our organization to deal with these kinds of challenges very quickly. We have the infrastructure now to manage through these challenges. So we'll be reporting to the Commission as we go, and obviously, we're in constant communication with our Board and throughout our organization with the plans to address and do our reset on this issue. What that means for us is things are tighter than we thought at this point. We know the direction of healthcare. It's going to continue to get tighter and tighter and tighter. Reimbursement continues to go down, and expenses continue to go up for everything. This is the challenge in the healthcare environment. We're very confident as we move along that we're going to, that we'll, we'll address this issue and continue on with our plans to move into this complex environment. This just puts the urgency up a little bit more for us. And I could stop here if you have any specific questions about finances, or I can move on, and we can do questions at the end, whatever you prefer.
Do you hope? Not as good as him. Oh, all right. We'll just do it.
Okay. Next one, you know, another issue related to our ever tightening and challenging financial situation. We're constantly having to look at all service lines, everything that we're able to do or not do moving forward as an organization. We can't continue to be all things to all people. No hospital can. Last couple of months, I've been having some honest dialogue with the Grant County Health Council, and that involved our ability, as we moved into our budget cycle, Hila Regional's ability to support the Health Council at the level that it's been over the last few years. And so the last two months, we've been talking to the Health Council, and with this last financial challenge, we've been having some significant dialogue about Hila Regional's most probable inability to support the Health Council with the personnel that we have over the last three or four years. And so starting July 1st in our new budget year, new fiscal year, we are moving in with a transition with the Health Council to pulling back Hila Regional's personnel support of the Health Council. Philosophically and with volunteer time, we still 100% support the Health Council efforts. But I wanted the Commission to know that we're having serious dialogue, and in our open Health Council meeting yesterday, more significant dialogue around Hila Regional's inability to support that going forward. We started that support when the state pulled their funding of Health Councils three or four years ago, and at that time, Hila Regional picked up that support, and that was at a time when the state was still providing $15 million a year to Hila Regional through the Soul Community Provider Program. We've been significantly cut from, from that point, and wanted you guys to know for obvious reasons. Next update, our family medicine, our Hila family medicine program with Dr. Stanley and Cindy Moreno as nurse practitioner and the support staff there, along with our auxiliary, attended the Women's Club Community Health Outreach Event last week. It's a pleasure to be part of such a well-attended event and such a well-organized event. We thank the Women's Club for putting that on. Want to remind people that the Hila Regional Golf Classic is coming up June 13th, and we appreciate support around that. I know our Chair has a team that's going to be participating. We're not sure of the name of that team yet. I'm not sure if you're ready to share that, but we.
No, I have to name it.
We appreciate.
Could we vote on that name? The Chair does not recognize.
Appreciate that support. Again, it's going to be June 13th, and any questions or more information around that, please call Mike McMillan at 538-1259. We want to also let people know that our foundation will also be participating in the Give Grandly event on May 5th. We'd appreciate our community support around that. And last thing is, Hila Regional, we're just really excited to once again participate in this year's Hila, excuse me, Tour of the Hila, an important event for our community. And we typically supply the EMS services and man the first aid tents, and we're excited about that event. That's all I have as far as reports. I can stand for questions.
Rodney, for me, I just wanted to see if you could enlighten us on, you know, we're talking about the condition of the hospital and stuff. The trends as far as state and national, and what's happening with other hospitals, similar to ours, as long as, you know, it's a governmental type of control. So could you explain that and see how we compare to others?
Yeah, you know, I don't have data in front of me. I'll give you specifics, but I was just at, last week, I was at the New Mexico Hospital Association's annual strategic planning event, and, you know, besides that, what I also do is talk to everybody, and how are you doing, and what challenges do you have? And I can just honestly let you know that New Mexico hospitals, especially rural hospitals, are struggling with the same issues, decreasing reimbursement. Even though there's been a Medicaid expansion, more people on insurance rolls, many of our insurances have increased, well, everybody in the room knows, co-pays and deductibles, so that increases bad debt for hospitals. So rural hospitals are extremely challenged, to the point that in the overall strategic plan for New Mexico, one of the key areas of focus will be further support of rural hospitals, because the rural hospitals have the most challenges with regards to all of the, all of the cuts.
Would that support be from the state, national, or rural?
Well, through the Hospital Association, their job is to advocate for, you know, hospitals' needs, so we use the Hospital Association to advocate at the state level and at the federal level. But the direction is still clear, you know, we're going to advocate, 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 but you can guarantee that reimbursements are going to continue to go down. And over these next few years, they're talking about instituting these more value-based payments and bundled payment options and population health. So you hear all these kind of buzzwords, and what that means is it's going to be even more challenging for hospitals to get reimbursed for the services they provide. They're going to depend on, you know, outcomes of people. And although the hospital has a role in the outcomes of the health of people, people also have a role in their own health. So, but people won't get penalized for that. A hospital would be penalized, and physicians. So the challenges that are coming in the next couple of years in healthcare, we're going to be talking a lot about them, these challenges. We have to be really efficient. We have to be focused on quality, 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 and partnering more than ever with our Commissioners, with our, with many agencies in our community to make this work.
Is there some conversation going on now nationally as far as speeding up those payments and making it more workable to, for, for you guys?
Yeah, there's lots of discussion about it, but nothing.
I read a paper the other day about it, but they wasn't giving no answers to this in some committees they were talking about.
Lots of discussion, lots of advocacy for it, but the direction still continues towards less reimbursement and this overall population health, managing entire populations with a fixed, capitated amount of money. So it's going to continue to get more and more challenging. We're clear about where this is going. There's no, you know, delusions about that.
So we just have to get better?
Better, better quality, more efficient. So we're clear about what we need to do. This last course correction, though, just moved our timeline a little further.
Okay. Okay.
And one of the questions I had, you basically answered it now, the Affordable Healthcare Act has been fully implemented. Do you, do you have a feeling for how many more people are on insurance or Medicaid than we had in the past?
Yeah, you know, and they gave some statistics at this last meeting, and I believe in this last year, don't hold me to this, I'll have to dig into my notes, but a significant amount, another 80,000 New Mexicans are on insurance rolls in this, in this last year. So that continues to, to go well. More people are insured. But then the programs, Seoul Community Provider, those things go away. And so our net, we have, it's actually a net decrease in revenue for us. And then the commercial insurance is, as you know, are going up, costs you more for your premiums, and your deductibles are more, and your copays are more, and what, how that typically impacts the hospital is with increased bad debt, because people can't pay their $5,000 deductible or whatever it is. And so that hits us in debt, and bad debt. Whereas under the Seoul Community Provider Program, we actually were reimbursed more, a higher percentage of those services we provided.
Then you are on your way-
Yeah, so more people are on the, on the rolls, but it's, it's coming out for us so far as a net decrease in our overall revenue.
Has one of those meetings been, a certain bill for something, had to do with inmates and not losing-
Yes.
Their, uh, once they get incarcerated-
Yes.
Yeah, Medicaid, they, you know, they lose their benefits.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
It's good, because it's taken about six months then, after they got off, get back on, and it's creating a problem.
Especially if they went up there, yeah. Yes, that's a good thing for us and, you know, our jails and-
Okay. Anything else?
Thanks, Brian.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for coming. Appreciate the information.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll keep it coming to you guys.
Let's see that number go down.
Yes, appreciate it.
Good job.
Mike?
Best we're going to do, I hope you can hear me, Mr. Chairman, commission members. I could respectfully submit my report from March 19th through April 16th. Item number one, policy procedures are currently being revised right now by the Detention Administration. Item number two, on our detention facility update, we currently have two vacancies, and that was created by a couple officers who made the decision to pursue other careers. And so right now, we are receiving applications and doing the background and processing the new hirees, potential new hirees. Item number three, our assessment, the status remains the same. Item number four, on our training update, myself and Deputy Anizola will be attending the three-day New Mexico Gang Conference in Albuquerque. Lieutenant Aguirre and Sergeant Galindo and Sergeant Becero will be attending training dealing with special needs inmates in the area of mental health. Sergeant Galindo and Sergeant Hardisty will be attending a 40-hour critical intervention training. They're, they're, they went Monday, they began their training for that 40 hours this week. Item number five, on our intervention inmate support program, the inmate bill was not signed by the governor, but the committee has chosen to continue on with the program, and we'll just give it another shot next year. Item number six, on our recognition awards program, Sergeant Galindo has been nominated by the employees for the Employee of the Month. Sergeant Galindo was nominated by his peers for dedication to duty and for going above the call for service and support of the detention facility, and we appreciate his efforts and what he's doing at the detention facility. On our detention statistics, Grand County Detention Facility's average daily population for this reporting period, the average daily population is 52, seven less than last month. On our high population males is 54, which is two less than last month. High population females is 11, one less than last month. And for this reporting period, there was 57 inmates up to this reporting period that were incarcerated in the facility. And the statistics show a slight decrease in activity. Average length of stay is 9.26 days. Inmate population, it's the graph that I put in there for you. It's a new graph, and what, the reason I put that in there is I wanted you to see from January to April, and these are new bookings, how many males and females are being incarcerated in the facility since January. And as you can see on the graph, it's a slight increase. The graph kind of goes up, the females, it kind of goes up and goes down, and then obviously, April is one of the highest months for males and females. So is there any questions that I can ask for on the graph?
No, Mike's had a tough job. I attended the meeting yesterday, I'm not going to go into it, but it's, you get a tough job, and you've got some hurdles to make, and we've got the right men in the spot.
Well, thank you, sir. We'll, we'll do our best, and it'll, it's going to take us all, and it'll take everybody at the facility, and we'll get them all going, that, you know, they're, we're going to get it done.
Okay.
Can you continue on? Item number eight, the agency arrest totals. What I also did for you on that graph, I also included the percentages on the, on the far right-hand corner, so you can see the agencies and, and the arrest totals themselves, and you can see what the percentages are, ones that are bringing, that, the arrests these that are coming in the facility. For the April reporting period, Silver City Police Department had 94, Grant County SO had 30, New Mexico State Police had nine, Barrett had seven, Santa Clara 10, Verde Police had three, and New Mexico Game and Fish had two.
There was actually an article in yesterday's Silver City Daily Press-
Yes, sir.
About-
Yes, sir.
The town trying to change how they do business, because it was costing them so much in incarceration fees. Is that going to, I mean, I guess if they're not there, we're not, we're not paying as much out to keep them. But on the other hand, that could impact our revenue.
Yes, sir. We're seeing a dramatic decline in, in the amount of municipal arrests right now. And it's-
They're still 75%.
And, yeah.
Because it involves other ages. You're talking about the police department? You're talking about the municipal court? So, which, municipal court is totally separate, except for budgetary issues and stuff, so it's-
Well, I don't want to get in there legal, I just wondered if it's going to affect our revenue in a negative situation.
Yes, sir, it has. And like I say, our population is, it was, I reported this reporting period, it was 57, and right now, it's at about 48, the population right now. So we're staying around right about that average right now for capacity. All right, sir. Item number nine, on our transports, District Court, we had 25, Division One, we had six, Magic Court, Division Two, we had eight. Municipal Court, we had two, Santa Clara, we had one. And medical transports, we had five, for a total of 47 for this last month. And our jail utilization, we had 21 felonies, 43 misdemeanors, probation violations and warrants totaled 84, and there was a total of 148 offenses, and total hours in custody is 26,486 hours. And again, this is also shows another decrease as compared to last month. That's my report. If you have any questions?
Any questions?
Thanks for what you did.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Mr. Villa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. Just want to talk a little bit about the, the conference that was held here in Grand County while we were in the face conference. I want to thank Commissioner Ramos for, for chairing that. I appreciate it. There was approximately 110 people that registered from around the state, total of about 150 that attended the conference, that's with speakers and presenters and all that. So in my opinion, it was very successful. So I want to thank you, the commission, for, you know, supporting that here. I think it was, it was a great thing. In the process of working with Santerita Fire Department Chief Mark Standard to try to get the station built and the architects, we'll meet with them this week, see if we can progress with that. Airport, since the inception of the field farm, we've sold about 45,000 gallons of, of Jet A. We're in the process now getting more, now that the weather's warming up more, are, are going towards the abgas, some of our local pilots. We do have the refueler for the abgas that's out of the airport now. We've been in communication with the Forest Service out there, they're, they're hotshot based, and so everything looks like it's in place now that we won't, if, if there is to be an incident, which we hope there isn't, we'll be ready for it as far as the field's concerned. Public Works Department, I want to thank them, they're working hard, obviously, now the weather is starting to get warmer, baseball's in place now, so a lot of people using the fields. We put two restrooms out at Baton Park and closed those other ones off. We had one as a handicap, the other one is not. So we do have another pad to put a couple more, we're going to wait on that till the activity starts to build up more, because obviously, it's going to cost us. That's really all I have as far as any report with the other departments I have, unless you have any questions.
Any questions, man?
Yeah.
The airport, how's that going?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Hall, yes, that is complete. We have done that. We're just in the process of waiting for OT care, but the pilot sound is done, it's complete. We did have to put a new septic system out there. Other one, that cloud was out there for, I couldn't tell you how many years, many years. So that was redone, and that's functional.
Runway?
I'm sorry?
Runway?
Though the runway project is still in the process, it's, we're seated for 2016 to have the complete runway done. We are working on an RFP right now to get architect, we should have that in place by me, Justin and I and several others in the county department are looking at those, trying to make a decision. Other than that, that's really all I have. Again, the activity's going to pick up at the conference center, being that it's graduation now, we're going to get a lot of activity, so we're going to have a little bit of overtime on the weekends to make sure that those facilities are clean, and, and making sure that we, we keep it up, up to date, and because there's going to be a lot of activity, not there is it now, but it'll even be more as we get into graduation. Same with Baton Park, that is completely filled for graduation, so we'll just have to see how it goes. I just encourage the public to make sure that any damage they see or any vandalism out there, please report that, either to law enforcement or to at least Justin, I mean, obviously, if it's already done, but to report that kind of stuff graffiti, so we can, we can get that cleaned up as quickly as we possibly can.
That's due during weekends, right?
Probably when we can, Silver, we can hire two or something, maybe sheriff can have-
Right, but people are having, you know, or, or having graduations even before our graduation day, and obviously, into June as well. But as everybody knows, we'll be shut down by August 1st, and we're working towards that, making sure some of those areas that had stuff going on for many years are completely being cleaned down now.
If you can get the schedule to the Sheriff's Department, I'm sure that, that Sheriff will have people walk through at certain times.
And actually, we've been working with them through the paragras, and Sheriff has been very attentive to, to our meetings, and we really do appreciate it. I know that we've discussed more security and, you know, we've got a little bit of a game plan.
He understands, and we have to go and spend a bunch of money on vandalism, but that impacts his budget later on, so.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Commissioner Ramos is correct. In our parks and rec meeting, we have been working with DWI coordinator, Cindy and McLean, along with the Sheriff's Department, and, and seeing how we can, as we go forward, obviously, we'll have a, a totally different agreement in line and package for people to sign once we get the new facility going. So we've got a good jump on it now, and we're working towards that, and hopefully, we'll have something in place by the time we open. But I want to thank the sheriff, definitely, he's been proactive in, in what we've, we've seen over the last couple of years at the, at the victim center. So that's all I have. If you have any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. The guys have been really working hard getting roads passed and hauling in chips, getting ready for LGF, Chips Hill Project, starting on June 1st. We're taking a day off during the weekend, working on our resident complaints, which hasn't been much, but the guys have just been busy doing that. Tell them I got, unless you have any questions.
How you doing?
Long time, huh?
Nope.
Okay. Linda's already done, so I guess we'll move into elected sheriff.
Thank you, Commissioner, Chairman, commissioners. Just want to report, we are preparing for the upcoming events that are happening, the Tour of the Gila, the graduations. Just had prom this last weekend, it was fairly quiet, nothing major happened. I just want to thank my staff for the work that they do and they continue to do. They've been extremely busy. Summertime's coming, so we're preparing for that. We thought we were going to have a break over the winter, but obviously, then we've just been on the go, and I'd like to thank my staff for everything that they do, you know. We got to acknowledge them for the work that they do, because they're out there putting their lives on the line every single day to keep our community safe. So other than that, I have nothing else to report unless you have any questions.
Mr. Sheriff, John?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Assessor?
Thank you. I feel a little bit under the weather, like my father would always say, "Oh, finally, you know, there's a grip, so..." I'm a little slow today, okay? Since the last time we met, I, I like to express a little bit of a social calendar here in Grand County. You know, April is kind of a very difficult month for me. But April was also National Trails Month, the CDT got together, Grand County Trails got together, Big Ditch, Senior Olympics, did a, did a decathlon, you know, in between my time, Thursday, short film downtown. It was a lot of fun, because they do ask for a lot of the elected officials, especially the commissioners. We, we, we did have some wonderful time down at, at one of the places where, where we introduced the CDT. That was a very, very interesting thing that went on, and I was really impressed on these people that showed up and how much they spent time here for the grocery seeds and so on. I want to first thank my staff. This is the first quarter that I'm going to report. Notice of evaluation will be mailed on April 30th, 2015. Second, the assessor's office was evaluated by Property Tax Division come April 8th, 9th of 2015. It all went good, all the elected officials' properties were inspected. That's one of the things that, that they do on Property Tax Division. I do have a update on the legislative, just on the assessors' bills, and I'm just going to just name the bills, and then later on, I can be in detail. We do have the House Bill 49, Electronic Notice Evaluation, House Bill 67, Tax Schedule Corrections. We have House Bill 348, Incentive Pay for the, for the appraisers. Senate Bill 112 is drought conditions for risking ag land. Senate Bill 248, Exemption for Special Assessments for 100% Disabled. And Senate Bill 506, 100% Disabled, currently exempted from properties. There's only been one bill signed from the governors, and we're just waiting to see what's going to happen on that. The Assessors Conference is, is in April 23rd, 24th in TRC, and hopefully, my chief deputy and myself will attend. We wrote, we rewrote the job description, wondering if we're going to hire a mapper in the assessor's office, and we find it settled that the mapping department will be in the planning department. Now we are back to hire more appraisers, now we're just waiting for the okay from the county manager. April 21st, 2015, the retired mapper and my chief deputy are working on the 2015 backlog recorded deeds. Once we cut off the task, the process of deeds will be handled and handed over to the mapping department, which is now under the planning department. The planning department will be advised by the mapping assistants for the mapper. Hopefully, the process of these deeds will not fail behind and will be entered up to date with the current ownership and values in the assessor's office program. It is critical to the assessor's office that the processing of deeds and transactions will be within 45 days of the record date. The Chief Bureau of Property Tax Division met with the planning department, the assessor's office, on April 9th. PTD, Property Tax Division, will be monitoring the situation throughout this year, and if the county is not in compliance with the state regulations, property tax will take over the mapping department to get the job done, and it will be under the county's expense. We are constantly talking to Property Tax Division, not only on the notices evaluation, but what's been going on in the assessor's office. That's pretty much my report. I just would like to state that, please stay tuned on CapStation. I do have a production under Raul Torrieta Luar 88 Production, and I do, I am going to break down in detail on my reports and also all social events here in Grand County. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Questions for the assessor?
No, thank you. Mr. Chair?
I was a little late this morning because I was trying to run my report that I normally bring to you guys, and there's a glitch on the system, so was on the phone with Tyler, and they'll be doing a patch this evening, so I'll bring my report for the Thursday meeting. The only thing I do want to mention right now is that we are in the process of collecting a second-
So, I'll bring my report for the Thursday meeting. The only thing I do want to mention right now is that we are in the process of collecting a second half taxes, which are due no later than May 10th. So, encourage people to keep their taxes current and, unless you have any questions.
And when do they do?
May 10th.
May 10th. Okay. Any question? Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Business?
Madam Manager?
Linda and I are working on the budget, and hopefully, we'll have a preliminary version for you to look at at your meeting in May. Received requests from all the department heads and elected officials, and they, they understand the financial position we're in, and most of them submitted flat budgets, and I appreciate that. Next week, we will begin contract, union contract negotiations. Also, continue to work on policy revisions and updates, just taking one of them at a time. Also, as Brian mentioned, the hospital being unable to continue to fund the health council. I've had some dialogue with the health council in regards to, they requested the county to consider acting as the fiscal agent for them. So, we're having those discussions and trying to determine whether or not the county would be a right fit to, to help them out with that. So, I'll keep you advised as those discussions continue. That's pretty much it.
On the, on the road, road department, I know that we budgeted like $377,000 for securing our schools. And we did get an email this last couple of weeks. Have we got any, any answers at all from those people on how much that's going to be yet?
No, I've been unable to determine what amount we will see. Those figures don't seem to be available. I do have a call in to Steve to see if maybe he has, has those figures yet. Linda and I are hoping maybe 250, 270 to be on the safe side, just the way the email read, but-
The email read 7 million nationwide. That's probably the only thing we said.
But it was a little bit, and it was a decrease. So, based upon that, we're kind of hoping for 250 to 270. But as soon as I get that figure, I'll let you know what it is.
Okay. And I guess that's it? All right. Take a motion to adjourn? So, move. Second? All in favor, 65 say no. All right. Motion passed.